Fine.
Yep.
Is that song?
Yeah, we're good.
We're missing Mark, right?
Yes. Once he's hired.
Oh my.
He's a hundred percent.
We're recording.
All right, they're getting it going in, in that room.
It's good, we're good.
Yeah, awesome.
I'm off and running.
Yes, sir.
All right, I call this joint session of the city council and the school board to meeting to order our work session on April eleventh, and we're having it in this room because the school board had requested that we meet at a table where we're all able to see everybody.
Here we are.
So we're gonna have this meeting in this room, and then we're going to convene in the council chambers for the rest of the work session at five thirty. But does the school board need to get their meeting called to order?
Yeah, I call our school board meeting with the joint session with city council to order.
All right, excellent. Now, I will entertain a motion for the consideration of the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Mayor Claffey, I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Woods, second.
Work.
Where is Mr. Kessler?
Right here.
I knew you somewhere, I can't see you. Please call.
Ms. Edwards.
Hi.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Out of breath, I'm here.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Well, welcome everyone, and thank you all for coming, and we throw it open for the, our work session. Please proceed.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Claffey, Vice Mayor Darby, members of city council. Thanks for having us this evening, we appreciate it. We got a little bit of an update. People may or may not know the governor had until noon on Monday to respond to the budget that was returned to him from the general assembly. And so what happened on Monday was the governor issued two hundred and thirty-three amendments to the budget. The general assembly will return to Richmond on April seventeenth for a one-day session to consider these amendments. The information from the governor's office is not detailed enough to compare it directly to the general assembly's budget right now, so I think we'll see a little bit of posturing. There wasn't really a lot on public education that was, that was discussed. And the governor emphasized that they would maintain a three percent pay raise that came out of both houses. Our neighbors in Augusta and Waynesboro are offering employees a four percent pay raise. So, you know, we've heard about that from school board members and from staff. Really, the entirety of our budget is trying to give everybody a pay raise. So depending on how the state budget comes in, if we can get to a four percent pay raise, that would be our priority. Depending on, you know, like I said, how, how the state budget plays out, I do, I would like to note that Stan City School salaries are still higher, even at our current three percent pair, pay, pay increase compared to Augusta and Waynesboro, but, I mean, the gap's closing. But we did that calculation just to see where we landed, if we aren't able to get to four. Also, on Monday, the governor vetoed the one percent sales tax for school construction prob, projects. We appreciate city council passing that referendum, we appreciate your support. But when it got, and I was kind of surprised by that one, that the governor vetoed that one, so the general assembly could put it back in the budget if they are able to override that veto, and we'll see what happens there. I know that a lot of push for that legislation came from parts of Virginia, like the southwest, where really the school construction, school buildings are in awful shape. And that was a part of the state that helped propel the governor into, to a victory, so, so we'll see. That one surprised me because again, that, you know, there's, he has a very strong constituency in that part of the state, and they have great need for some relief for school construction. During our Monday school board meeting this week, our board voted to allow special permission for city staff to bring their children to our schools. So city employees will have access to all of our schools. They already had access to our preschool and our reduced rate childcare program, so it made sense to us to allow city staff to bring their children from out of the district to attend, attend Stan City Schools if they choose to do so. And I think Mr. Van thinks that's a great.
County, they can still.
How many students are, are involved in that this year?
In the, like, in the.
That are living in the county that are, are attending school in the city.
The only ones that are doing it now are the ones that were grandfathered in from like three years ago, because during, during the pandemic, we put a stop to special permission. And we have not opened it back up. So, so now we're opening it back up to just city staff and, and for Mr. Van and the HR folks. You know, this is a great recruitment tool. It might just be enough to get a police officer or firefighter that might be weighing a couple of different choices. They got the opportunity to come here and get a great rate on childcare, or they want their children close by to where their place of employment is, then this would be a nice little perk for them.
So, so, to Garrett, it's for all city employees, not just city schools.
Right.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. Yep, so, so now all school employees and all city employees.
So before COVID, was it, was it any widespread than that, or was it, was it always just city employees?
Before, before COVID, who else, so before COVID, it was open to pretty much anybody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Percent, you had to pay a fee for it.
But a lot of the employees on both sides live in the county, so they, they would some, a lot would send their kids to county.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so it was tuition-based before, and.
And this is not what y'all recruit, is that?
Right. They can come for free. Yep. Also, another update, the Montgomery Hall Park tennis court renovation is nearly complete. The lights are going up now. I think y'all are probably aware that with the, the lights were a bunch of projects that were all tagged together to save money, and so now that's happening. Our kids are practicing there, and pretty soon they'll be able to play games there. It looks, it looks great. Contractors did a fantastic job.
How many courts is it, two or three?
There are, all right, there are four courts there. One's a pickleball court. I don't know if you've been out there when the pickleball folks are out there.
The pickleball ninjas.
Yeah, they thought we were building all pickleball courts, and I said Stanton High School does not have a pickleball team, so.
Well, they're like Gypsy Hill, right? Aren't they painted for?
They're painted for Gypsy Hill, so, so how it ended, the two lower courts are strictly tennis courts. We left the one pickleball court alone. And then the other tennis court up high also has pickleball lines on it, so that was kind of a compromise.
Yeah, it's very popular.
I think by Mr. Todd.
How many did you lose when you had the high school construction?
I think we had six down there, so we lost, we lost three.
How many do you need to have a, a VEA event, I mean?
Three's about the minimum, so when we add the lights, that helps a whole bunch, right, because it takes longer, it takes longer to play through all of it.
Good.
Yeah. So, you know, that was, we worked really closely with Parks and Recs on that project because it benefited everybody. And again, we used leftover funds from the Stanton High School project to repair those tennis courts. We've said this before, but our philosophy in Stanton City Schools is to be good, stewards of taxpayer money, to partner with the city whenever possible and promote equity, and this project checks all those boxes. You know, we're looking for win-win solutions. And, and, and I, and I know, and if anyone saw those courts before, they were in utter disrepair. I mean, two-foot-high grass, cracks, and broken pavement, rusty fences, and all those things, so, so we were glad to be able to, to help on that. And then finally, Virginia Municipal League Essay Contest, all of our seventh graders participated. And I'm telling you, when Stanton City Schools enters a competition, whether it's academic, or athletic, or artistic, we got a great chance to win, and we pulled off the first-place essay, and we also got ten honorable mentions. So I emailed everybody and offered to share them with you if you want. I didn't get any responses.
Oh, I was thought you were gonna bring them.
We still happy to share.
You'd rather email them, I thought you were bringing them tonight, but please email them.
You see, all right.
Please email.
I'll email, I'll email to you tonight. Yeah, they're, they're, they're good.
I bet.
The kids did a really nice job, the teachers did a really nice job, and.
I've seen that in the Virginia Municipal League Magazine the last two years, and I'll, I'll probably copy, but that's, that's a neat comment.
Yeah, yeah, so I think you guys will enjoy reading them.
Are we going to recognize the winner tonight? Yes, please.
I don't think it's tonight.
Tonight, no, it's not tonight.
You're gonna have to plan that with the family.
I got you.
If you guys wanted to do more than that, just let us know. If you want to recognize the honorable mentions too.
If you got a way of wanting to do it, that's fine, you know, the more the merrier.
Okay, and that pretty much concludes my report, and I'll take any other questions that people had.
Only comment I'm gonna make is, you know, we're talking about athletics and the tennis courts. We're glad to see that it's finally getting done at Montgomery Hall. And today we had a meeting with the Braves for baseball, and of course, we're trying to get that field improved. And then remember that the football stadium as well is provided by the city. Now, most school systems would supply their own athletic fields in conjunction with that. So remember, that's something that comes out of the city coffers that is provided free of charge to the high school, which is an unusual situation in, in most of the state. But we're doing, we gotta, the football field's in good shape, and the baseball is not, and we are aware of that, and we are desperately trying to get the baseball conditions improved.
And historically, it dates back to the old Lee High School being located right by the park, and the kids walking across the street playing in the park, and then, you know, when we, when it was time for us to rebuild and renovate the old Lee High School, I mean, it's a small site with lots of elevation. There's not a lot of place for, for fields. So I think it's cool that we play in the city, and it makes us unique in the park.
And it was a lot of times at Lee, when, when we didn't really go to class and went to the park.
Sure.
Uh huh, okay, okay.
I'm sure that was on the assistant principal's daily.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
It should have been.
Excellent.
Questions from council?
That's not a question, but, well, it is. Garrett, I know back probably as the school, high school was finished, we talked about having some type of open house at some point.
Right.
And I don't know that that really ever, you know, happened. I mean, I think there's been lots of folks that's been able to go through and see it.
Yeah.
But I still hear a lot of just citizens who, you know, they would like to see what their tax dollars have paid for, so is there a way that we could work on getting something set up to where the public could be invited to come and see the high school and?
We had the same request from a school board member earlier this year, and we were trying to figure out a way to do it. I consulted with Chief Williams about it because, you know, it's a school safety, security's always our first concerns. He had some apprehensions about it. I think there's a way we can do it if we can keep the groups to a manageable size and, and, and figure out. I mean, I don't think we necessarily need to do a background check on every person who wants to go on the tour, but, you know, that's kind of where we are in our heads when we're thinking about keeping kids safe.
Make sure nothing gets placed in lockers and left.
I think it would be a pretty.
You're throwing your mapping stuff out in your head, oh, and now I know where this is and where that is.
Have to say, no, taking pictures and things like that. So I think it would be a pretty major undertaking. But one of the things I offered is, yeah, let me know who wants a tour, sign them up, I'll take them on a tour, you know, so we can, we can think about, you know, some, some way to do that, but I think we gotta be fair and open it up to everybody, but also be smart and do it in a safe way.
I agree.
Well, could it be something like, excuse me, like on a weekend? I mean, I know some people just wanna see the school, not necessarily see all the students and, you know.
Right.
Right.
Oh, yeah, it definitely wouldn't be happening when the school's in session.
So could it be something when the school is out?
And one of the things we said, well, come to one of our plays, come to an athletic competition, come to, come to something that you can see the school anytime you want. Nothing's stopping you from doing that.
Well, I've been to events over there, but I've never, I, I mean, I was lucky enough to get the tour of the school. I got a cook store. But I mean, you know, I think people want to see some of the facilities that you have, you know, what the new library looks like, and what that, well, like a theater room and stuff. There's some neat stuff in there that you don't know is there.
I know a lot of people saw it, like just the gymnasium when Coach Hatcher passed away.
Right.
That was, you know, a sad time, but it did allow, you know, a lot of the public to be in there, but still, I'm just making you aware, that's something that I hear.
Hear a lot.
Oh, I don't know if it's a lot, but I hear it periodically from, from people that, you know, especially when it's budget time and, you know, that kind of thing. People are like, I wanna see the school.
Okay.
It is a forty-six million dollar investment that the citizens have paid for.
Yep.
Probably the single largest citizen investment in, in the city.
Good place to invest.
Yeah, yeah, and it's beautiful.
I agree.
About the same time, right after my kids graduated.
Middle school band concert there this Sunday.
Yes.
Uh huh. Though they're not.
Percussionist that I know. I'll just make a comment. I'm always impressed by the kindness initiative, because I get the newsletter, and so every, I don't know, so often, like today, the kindness initiative, kindness initiative came out, and there, somebody is chosen from, I think, every school.
Right.
Every school, and what they're doing, and just positive reinforcement for pro-social behavior, for positive, for kindness, is just, I think it has created a culture, and that can only have lasting benefits through generations.
Students are nominating their teachers now.
Yes.
And even, you know, to see high school teachers get nominated by high school kids, you know.
Yeah, it's really touching, yeah.
It's very touching.
Yes, yes.
I mean, that's been there.
Yeah, I mean, it changes the culture of schools when kindness, when you're proactively.
You know, and a couple of things happen, like the adults are really touched, you know, when they get this recognition. But when you start to talk about, you know, who's, you know, the kindness ambassador, it's a really big deal, the students almost always know who the pick's gonna be among the students before you even make the choice. Be like, I knew Ron was gonna win, you know, and so it's, the kids know, you know. So we're making good selections, or we're getting good nominations, I guess is the way to say.
I think part of where it helps there, it also then expands out into the community.
Exactly. Well, that's it, exactly. So can't have too much of that. It matters.
I'll just also share that I was extremely impressed from the Shelburne's Economic Fair they just did. My son loved it. And I never got to do anything like that, and when I was in middle school, just to be able to work as a team and come up with basic budgets and develop a plan and.
It is one of the best activities. They remember it.
Came home and went straight to bed, he was so tired.
Yeah, right. She's like, I now know why you're tired after being at the show all day.
They will remember it. I mean, when they're as old as mine are, they'll still, something'll come up, and they'll be like, do you remember when we did that econ fair, Shelburne, and blah, blah, blah?
So I just wanted to make the statement, initiative of the, the drug awareness initiative that y'all put in place this year, and that y'all want to continue to put in place is really, really great. That's, that's great to, to do that, but I, it's, it's a but, but because I would like to see it done earlier too, like in the middle school. Also, you know, but not as extreme, but show some initiative there too for all the things that all the kids are experiencing now, and, you know, with the fentanyl and all of those things that's happening, and we never know what kid, what child is experiencing those things in their own home.
And thank you so much for your willingness to speak to our young people and your courage to get up there. We, we really appreciated it. And this last one got livestreamed to the middle school students, so they all benefited from this speaker.
They got the, the orange lights, lights there, yeah.
Yeah, but that was, that was, yeah, that was.
We had two powerful speakers.
Yeah, so thank you for initiating that.
And, you know, we had the entire high school student body in the auditorium, and
Yeah.
they were fantastic. I mean, they, they paid attention. You were there, you saw them. They were serious, they asked good questions, they clapped for each other. It's just showed a lot of maturity and a lot of class, so we were, we were really proud of them, our teachers were really proud of them.
Are, are y'all still, I think you've alluded to that, or have told me, but you're still partnering with the Southwest Virginia Program, and, and is that scene still continuing to produce big results?
The comprehensive instructional program, yeah, we, we continue to move up the charts on our student academic achievement. Lots of change is coming with accountability systems that we've been hearing about the last several weeks. I'd explain it to you if I could. It was, none of it's set, none of it's set in stone yet, and there's, we had a big meeting with all the superintendents around the state today, and there were lots of questions and lots of concerns. We're a long way from from getting that finalized, I think.
Questions for the board? I just want, oh, sorry.
Or comments?
I just wanted to start out by thanking you all for the resolution of support you all passed. Even though the, it got vetoed, it was, it was nice to kind of see that collaboration between both sides there. Kind of leading off of that, since, since that veto occurred, I'm just kind of wondering, and, and I hope I'm speaking for the board when I ask, when, when do you all feel we can reliably count on funds from the city for construction costs, renovation costs? You know, we had, we had asked and made a request at the last session to be included in the bond for the courthouse to help with the Shelburne project. We had hoped it'd be, you know, a win for the schools, obviously, a win for the city by helping with the west end revitalization. And then we found out that we weren't included, so I'm just kind of wondering how that decision came about, what the communication was like with that.
I'll take a stab at that, and I mean, we can turn it over to Jesse or Miss Bogart, but really, our whole focus has been on the courthouse. We do not know how much it was gonna be, and we just got a bid back within the last week. And of course, we, we have, we made a bond application for more than necessary, or more than the bond, the bid was. But we don't know what's gonna be necessary to take care of that project, and this is nothing that we chose. We were mandated by the state to do the courthouse, and therefore it becomes our number-one priority, and we're on a timetable by the end of twenty-five to complete it and to be out of downtown. We are not allowed to continue to share courts. It, so it must be completed first. We don't know what kind of contingencies we're gonna run into. We got three bids that were fairly close in the, in the twenty-million-dollar variety, but we are, we are in debt, and at this point, we don't want to incur any more debt than is necessary. And this, this is a huge chunk that's gonna come out there, and we hate to commit to other projects until we see what this one's gonna cost.
That's right. You did really well in planning ahead. You had crunched the numbers and determined that you could afford to do, was it thirty-five point five? Thirty-five was, was for the bond?
That was the, that was the bond.
Right, yeah, the, the top of what you could do.
No, that's not.
That was not, that was not affordable, considering. There was gonna have to be tax increases to afford that. It boils down to debt affordability. You have to be able to make the payment, and there was just no way to do it unless there was a tax increase. And it'd have to be double, because fifty-two percent of all real estate, personal property taxes go to the schools themselves. So, and you would have to raise it like four or five cents in order to cover.
And the, the other thing, Jesse can tell me, you know, that we have to look at, is that there, the city has approximately eighty, some, eighty-two million dollars debt.
Oh, eighty-two, I thought you meant percent of school debt.
Yeah, okay.
Schools are eighty-two percent of that.
And, right, and the school owns, per se, eighty percent of that. So, you know, just adding on another twenty, thirty million, I mean, can't do it right now.
Can I, I'm sorry, I just, I don't know the answer to the question, but I thought you were waiting to see about a grant, or a five-million-dollar grant. Has that come in yet?
Still waiting.
You're still waiting, and so if you don't get that grant, then.
So we don't get that grant, you don't give us bond money, it doesn't happen.
Do you know when, do you learn anything about that?
We've been digging, digging, April twenty-fifth is the next state school board meeting, and our understanding is something's supposed to happen then, but they keep kicking it down the road, and what's frustrating is every time they kick it down the road, the cost goes up, you know, and so we, we need to, need to get going.
Who's the grant through?
It's through the VDOE. You know, another interesting. School construction assistance program, they call it.
Another interesting comment.
I'm sorry, is that based on need, locality need?
So they had some school construction money left over from last year's budget. They didn't disperse it all, so school division's got a chance to reapply. And we were hoping if they're looking for a project that's queued up and ready to go, that, that's us, you know, and we'd hope we would be an attractive candidate because of that.
It's sort of along the sound of what you're saying about how there's a deadline for getting the courts done. This, they've got to have, you know, ideally shovel-ready projects because the money has to be spent by a certain, so that's why we've got it lined up. It's like, we can hit the ground now, and we wait for an answer, and we wait for an answer, and they change the date.
And kind of Plan C was that wind cent, sales tax, that didn't work, so. And it could still come back.
I understand you have eleven million in your budget. Is that right, to, could you get started?
For their school construction project, yeah, it's probably closer to nine, based on what we've paid out already.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can you, can you be getting started? I mean, we've been looking at our budget and the constraints that the city's operating budget so far.
We plan, we plan to get started. So the part we can afford to do now are the three renovated classrooms, the three new classrooms in the basement where the maintenance department used to be, and a renovation of the office, which is fairly inexpensive, but I think it'll make a really big difference.
And then the second half would be that extent, not extension, but building that out, the addition.
And we're all, we also continue to pay our lease at Evers.
Yeah.
But we do have, they've offered to sell it to us in pieces.
Oh, this is new.
Yeah, so.
It's all small.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's better.
We're in, you know, we're in negotiations.
Thanks, Fred.
Never mind, sorry, thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Well, and, and.
Never mind.
Okay, let's go.
All right, this is a close session. Very good. And I got the one other comment I wanted to make. I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it came up. That due to the ARPA money being out there until twenty-five, it must be spent by then.
Twenty-four, actually, twenty-four.
Gonna be this year.
Yes, by the end of twenty-four, beginning of twenty-five. It's very difficult to get a legitimate bid for any services this year because prices have been jacked up.
Everybody's competing for the same vendors, the same materials.
Exactly.
It's ARPA money.
And they know, they gotta use it, so.
So, I mean, that has us very worried about the courthouse, and we don't know what, you know, the overruns are gonna be, and what they're going to be able to purchase, and what the overruns are going to be. So we're all sitting in a, in a dangerous area as far as construction goes now because of the ARPA money. It has inflated everything.
We just got told almost a million dollars for bathroom renovations.
Yes.
Sorry, I think we just get hit with a lot of, a lot of costs, and a lot of infrastructure costs that we just continue to be shocked by.
Yeah.
And it's not that nobody, that's not that.
The cost of doing business is going up.
Everything is expensive, so it's just, you know, you know, the pool house, you know, everything, it's just like overwhelming, but everyone, I am not, well, I should only speak for myself. I support Stanton City Schools, and I know that school buildings need to be renovated, and I know that it makes a difference for staff and students, and the learning environment is very important. And we will, you know, wait to hear if you get this grant, but I don't know that it's something that's gonna be in this year's budget. I don't, not that we have discussed.
Well, and I, so. I think I speak for all of city council. I mean, every one of us supports Stanton City Schools. That's a given. I mean, you know, I don't have any kids out there, but we all support the fact that, you know, we want them to have the best that we can afford to give them. But we all support the fact that, you know, we want them to have the best that we can afford to give them. But that is the old thing, that we can't afford to give them. We just can't, you know, just keep on doling it out. We don't, we we can only afford so much. We have to keep the lights on, the water going and everything else. And we want to make sure the kids are getting a good education. It's gotta be, you know, we're enforcing, we're not the federal government. We can just, okay, we'll just print an extra.
Correct. We have something called a balance budget here at the city.
I think we're we're sensitive to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Federal government doesn't have that same constraint.
Sure do, yeah.
We have some debt that'll be retired in the next few years, but not. And that's where you say it's sort of the the traditional catch twenty two. It's like, okay, we're around, but okay, maybe next year we can do it. And then we watch the numbers change because, oh, you know, people on the other side of the table, you know, shift the line. Yeah, that same project we told you was gonna be X, but now it's X plus two.
Correct.
Have a nice day.
But I mean. I mean, I think the important thing is that you guys have a project that is ready to go, that you have money to, that you've already put into it, that. Is planned that I think will happen and that I can't. And the, say that we're, we have.
The grant is for five million. How much is the grant for?
It's, it's, uh, ten, twenty or thirty percent of the project cost. So we may not even get, if we get the grant, we may not get enough out of the grant to complete the project.
And the Shelburne renovations, the last time, what's the, what are we at now as far as cost for that?
Oh, what are, what did our bid come in at? Like thirteen and a half.
And that.
So we, so we took, we broke it into pieces. The addition's about six point five, and we can't afford that.
Okay, so, and that that doesn't include the operations center?
No.
Is this something that needs to be decided right now? Do something? I don't know.
That'd be great, but not expecting that.
Okay, I don't have a check. It needs, it needs a lot, a lot of love. And I don't, there's no denying.
When was the Shelburne, when, when was Shelburne renovated the last, well, we're, I can't remember the date.
You knew what that one thing was fifty years ago.
You said you're able.
That's when they converted it from a shop into a.
We can renovate the classrooms. It's just.
That's the.
Okay. So we can do renovations, but we can't add it.
It's the six point five chunk that.
And again, we looked at it as, you know. We're talking about win-win solutions for the city and the schools. It's West End development. It's a meeting place. It's a large space.
It's part of the concept of the design is it's part of the building, but yet you can close it all, and it could be used for community events.
And I dare say, I dare say that if we didn't have the Supreme Court of Virginia saying that you've got to build this courthouse. There's no ifs, ands, and buts. If we didn't have that on their plate, then we probably might, might be able to.
Possibly might.
That would be a great asset to have in a city, but.
Further comments from anyone?
Right?
Thank you.
Glad to have you all.
Y'all got any more questions? That I can't answer?
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate this.
Looking in your face.
Talk to each other. So that's very much appreciated.
Yeah.
Nice to have y'all. Ms. Bogart.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. So this is a continuation of the discussion we've been having. Um, so just to remind you, on December fourteenth, the commission presented city council with their final report and recommendations. And then on February ninth, you all held your own public hearing per the original resolution. Um, one of the recommendations presented was Action A two, which was to establish a permanent DEI commission. And at your retreat on February ninth, we also discussed this, and you all said, yes, we would like to have the commission become a permanent commission. Work with the commission to see what what they would like to see, um, going forward. So before you tonight is a resolution. And this is just discussion. There's no decision this evening. It'll come back to you at a future meeting for the final approval. Um, there's a resolution which we would normally do for any commission. I kind of use the bike ped commission resolution as an example. I mean, I can walk through that. And there's also an application, and that's a little different than normal boards and commissions or other boards and commissions. Remember, we, there was an application when the, uh, the commission was set up a few years ago. And so the commission would like to see that application continue, um, to be a unique application. Uh, not, rather than using the typical board and commission application. So that's in your packet as well. But I'll just walk through the resolution. So the resolution, um, basically outlines everything that the commission, um, will, that will, will do. Um, uh, uh, assign staff to support to the commission, which will be the responsibility of the city manager's office. I will be assigning staff. I wouldn't say it would be me. I mean, we will be in charge of assigning that staff to them. And then I'm just gonna read quickly their roles and activities. I'll just kind of paraphrase these. Um, there are several here bulleted in the resolution. Um, partner with the city's efforts to move the commission report recommendations forward. Provide expertise and guidance to city council and city leaders on ways in which the city engages with the community. Create a sense of DEI permanence by partnering with the city to better incorporate DEI, incorporate DEI within city events. Language and interactions. Advise city council and city leadership about points of impact affecting current and future commission recommendations. And suggest accountability measures to achieve those. Uh, for those recommendations that are outside the scope of city government provided services, advise city council and city leadership about the best path for acting on those recommendations, including ways that coordination can occur within the community itself. Community, communicate concerns of community members related to DEI to city council and city leadership. Conduct periodic reviews of relevant DEI strategies and recommendations based on current research and potential changes in the community. Provide at a minimum an annual written report to city council. And then perform such additional duties as may be identified by city council or the city manager or designee. The resolution also establishes the size of the commission to range from nine to eleven. If you remember, the original size was eleven to fourteen. So they agreed that this should be reduced slightly. And then establishes the term for three years. And what we would do initially is, uh, approximately half the commission have decided they would like to stay. On half will be transitioning off. A couple of them have already been appointed to other boards and commissions, which is exciting. We encourage them to apply for other boards and commissions as well. So we'll stagger the terms so that we get people on a one-year, two-year, and three-year. Eventually, everybody would be on a three-year. It'll take a couple of times to do that. So, um, so ideally, um, I guess the nominations committee would reappoint those members that are already on the commission back to the commission. Probably for one to two or two-year terms, not for a three-year term. And then future, um, members would go on for, we'd figure out the staggering. I'd work with Mr. Kessker on that to figure out how those would be staggered to get to that nine or eleven number. So the new appointees, it would be about half to appoint to get to that nine or to eleven number. Um, so that's the resolution. And let me talk about the application. So I mentioned that this is, this is the, almost the exact same application that was developed when the new commission was put together initially. There are two new questions the commission recommended be included. One was about asking, and these people don't have to, they're not required to answer these, but this is again trying to make sure that the commission is as diverse as possible and as many areas as possible. One was about religious belief, if you wanted to share something about that. And secondly, have you, or let's see, are you currently or have you ever been affiliated with the United States military? So we're looking for active duty veterans. So those are the two new questions on the application. Um, so that's my report. Again, this is just discussion only. I would put this on a regular agenda. Uh, potentially at the next meeting for approval. After that were to happen, staff would start to roll out the application. Uh, and hopefully, we would get some folks to apply, new faces on the commission. And those would get put on as the nominations committee can get through, get through those applications and get those folks put on, um, put on the commission. Um, so I will stop there and answer any questions that you all have about any of this at all. So.
No question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Alice just shared with me the paper copy of, with all the different questions that they had come up with. Um, so I'm just curious, and if maybe, Alice, you might answer this, but how did they, how did you come to the conclusion that? Number ten and number eleven really wanted to pursue in being on the.
The two new ones?
Yeah.
That, that was a recu- a recommendation of the commission. They had, we had two meetings with them after the retreat. Uh, I walked them through the application. This was their recommendation. Um, ultimately, you know, I told them the city council will have to approve this, and this will be up to council. So this is just simply their recommendation to add two new questions.
And it also came out of their listening sessions too, that they had done. So came out of the listening sessions also.
I was just curious, because there was a lot of questions.
Yeah, there are a lot of questions on here, so, plus the open-ended questions.
Um, the question, I don't live or work in the city of Stanton. Is somebody not, I mean, is that, can you serve on a? We had discussed this with for another commission. Does that disqualify you if you don't live or work? Or if you work in the city and don't live in the city, are you able to serve on a commission?
Well, I, I will jump in very briefly and just say this. Certain boards and commissions, Planning Commission, uh, the ec- um, the Economic Development Authority have residency requirements established by state statute. For those boards and commissions that do not, are not controlled by a state statute, such as the DEI commission. The council has the authority to impose a residency requirement or not.
Yeah.
I feel like we talked about this for the original resolution. But it was decided, no, not to put that restriction on there. So I could be wrong. I do have a, kind of have a memory of that, a big memory.
I know that the nominating committee has, kind of has the belief for the feeling. I hope I'm speaking for the three of us. At least that in order to serve on a Stanton commission, that you should live in Stanton. Um, as opposed to having, uh, Harrisonburg or Augusta County. You may live surrounding the city, but you don't, you know, you don't pay taxes into the city. You don't live in the city. You don't use the city, uh, sewer, water, all this stuff. So we just felt that in order to serve on a commission, that you should live in the city.
But it's nowhere documented that that is actually.
Yeah.
Case, right?
Okay.
We just assumed that was. What I always assumed.
So I reckon if it's a, if it's going to be a question, could we, as a council, just simply say or make that statement that a, in order to serve on a city commission, you should live in the city boundaries?
You could clearly make that a policy if you wish. You can either make it a council procedure memorandum.
Right.
Or you can make an ordinance. That's, that's up to you.
I think it'd be better to have it as a procedure memorandum.
Well, that would be for this council, then the next council could do whatever they wanted to, I reckon, yeah.
So how about if a person works for the city and don't live in the city, but works here in the city? I mean, because some of these, with the DEI especially, it coincides with a lot of things, different things. And if the person worked in the city, they could experience some things that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot.
There, there's, there's a fine line. My gut is still, you may work for the city because, but you still live in the city.
Yeah.
I mean.
That's something we can talk, no, we can talk about it.
No, 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 I, I see the, obviously, I see the benefit. Every community has, um, its own set of values and shared experience that you want represented in a commission like this. But the working one is an interesting one because you, I mean, obviously, you are still a member of this community. You might not live here, but you. So I don't, that's a tough one to.
Oh, I get it. I, I get it.
I don't know if you are necessarily part of the community. There might be people that drive in, walk in their, cut their office and drive back home. I don't know that that makes you part of the community, but.
But if you work here?
Yeah, if you work here.
I would say it's making you part of the community.
Uh, I mean, we could say work or live.
Yeah, I mean, you could make that stipulation. If you work or live and work for or live in the city of Stanton, you are eligible for to serve on a commission?
I think we want to think about, what is this, what are we really asking? We're deciding who we want to make decisions for us.
Well, guide us in our decision.
So who do we want guiding us in our decision?
I would say somebody that specifically lives in the city of Stanton, or the guidance part. I mean.
Okay.
Okay, that's something we can definitely take up in the future. We can get into it.
Is that all right, Mr. Blair?
Yeah, I can certainly present you a council procedure memorandum at a work session.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Let's, let's talk that over. Um, I'm reading with interest the added questions. Do you have a religious belief or family spiritual practice that you would like to share? And then the second one is, are you currently or have you been affiliated with the United States military? Are, are both of these legally qualified questions that we can put on an application? Is there any? Um, I mean, I'm thinking.
In a job interview.
Yeah, in a job interview, you'd be very questionable about this. Now, I understand that the religious belief that you're willing to share, but is that going to be part of the criteria and therefore, I'm just asking if it's legal.
So when we're talking about diversity, all of that is diverse. The questions are diverse for, uh, for diversity. Uh, and inclusion, actually. So we don't, we didn't want to leave, they didn't want to leave anything out. Uh, that would have a person to be on a commission, you know, to, that we're gonna choose or whoever choose to be on a commission.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you could get away with a job application for those two questions, but, but.
Those two questions?
Yes, that's, that's what I'm, yes, that's what I'm asking Mr. Blair. Is there any legal parameters about these two new questions?
Well, it's a great question because you are correct that a job, a, a, if you were to apply for a job. Um, questions and interview practices related to the job have to be related to the job duties. And yes, you would be in, uh, very deep legal trouble if during an interview you asked, are you part of a religious group? And then somebody answered the question, and then they were not selected to be hired. Yes, they could potentially bring a Title VII suit against you. That's a question you would. As a legal counsel, I would always say, we do not ask that question.
Right.
Now, the veterans' question in a employment context, actually, you, um, there's a Virginia statute that gives you preference. that gives you preference if you're a veteran for a local government job. I'll be happy to send that statute to the council. But as to the DEI Commission, the way the questions are shared and framed, I don't know that there's something that legally prohibits it, but here's where I might add some legalese that it is purely voluntary if you share either of these questions, and it shall not be held against you by the nominations committee or the city council.
Yeah, regardless how you.
Because I, I can understand the commission may say, you know, we have religious practices in the city that it might be beneficial to hear from that perspective or from a veteran, if there are no veterans. But we need to make it clear, we do not discriminate on if you answer these questions. Okay.
So that was what, what you just shared is what the commission was looking for. So suppose you want the commission to be a diverse commission, right? So if you don't have anybody on there with, you know, spiritual or religious, or if they want to share that, that maybe you need somebody on a commission that has that. So when y'all did the commission, y'all did choose different people to be on a commission that had different backgrounds. And one of those is religious belief.
So it's a.
And I'm not sure about the military one, though.
Comes from desire.
Well, these were on the original application.
Yeah.
These are new, that's, that's why we're talking about them.
But in choosing, they wasn't on there, but in choosing the people to go on there, that one of the persons was.
Only because he put it on there, and that was a different situation altogether. So it wasn't asked, these were not asked. So that was a totally different situation. But, but I, yeah, I agree with this, Mr. Blair said. I mean, maybe we can, if we need to tweak the language, that's fine, if we need to change it a little bit. But, yeah, they're, these are voluntary. I mean, you know, they can choose to answer any of these or not. I'm not sure, you know, hopefully, I would hope that they would. Last, when we, at the first round of applications, you know, everybody completed the application and, you know, and it was, and it was quite a diverse pool that ended up being appointed. So it was good. It worked out well at that point.
Yeah, no, Dr., I can't.
Stacia.
Yeah, she was very complimentary of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the questions for the DEI end up being, you know, like in a job interview, you'd think, okay, they're trying to pitch and hole or find out something about you. But in this, we're searching for more varied life experience to be part of the commission. And if they're voluntary, I understand fully Mr. Blair's point, you know, on that, that we wouldn't want to remotely get into that with a, an actual city paid position. But in this way, a case of it's voluntary, perhaps that would, you know, be part of a diverse group. So.
Further questions, Ms. Bogart?
Thank you for putting all this together.
So if you all are comfortable with the resolution, then we can put this on the next agenda for approval and go from there, so.
What are you gonna, are you gonna go nine or 11?
Between nine and 11. It's a range. Minimum of nine, maximum of 11.
Maximum of, there you go. Oh, that sounds good.
That way, if we get to 11, if somebody drops off, then you don't feel pressured to have to put somebody back on immediately.
The other, the other side of that is if you do, if you're going to do three-year rotations, then you do three new ones every, every year.
We'll figure out the rotation.
That would be nine. And then, and then if you do lose somebody, you, you get a, you get a random one, it's not like an incredible amount of pressure on the nominating committee at one time.
Exactly. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
That brings us to our fiscal year 2025 budget work session. And I'm not even going to say Ms. Bogart, I'm just going to say Jesse Owens is here.
I'm here for support.
All right, good. Welcome.
Here we go again.
I haven't done this in weeks.
Yeah, it's been like a whole week.
Days.
Okay, so the first slide, a few council members had questions about what these fund balance numbers meant. So I added a line that shows you what they are in what I think is everyday terms. So non-spendable, that is our prepaid assets. So you can't spend that money, because it will be expensed when the period of time comes that refers to that expenditure. Restricted is our VDOT funds, our opioid funds, grants, any restricted gift that the city gets that has not been spent. The committed is our safety net, currently at 16 and a half percent. The assigned is our vacation leave and any PO that is encumbered as of June 30th. And then the unassigned is carryover and the $250,000 contingency to come to our total. So I just wanted to put that out there to see if that helps clear up what all those different categories mean.
Yeah.
I can add a third line. Okay, so we want to talk a little bit about the JDR debt structure again, just to make sure that we're all in agreement what we want to do. So there are three options. Option one is what we presented last week, I believe it was. That's the 20, 20.5 million dollars in net bond proceeds with a 20-year term, right under about $1.5 million in debt service and $8.6, $8.6 million of interest. Option two is the same 20-year term, but it drops down the principal amount by $2 million. And I'll show you how we get there in a second. Same term, same interest rate, annual debt service drops down to 1.3 million with $7.7 million in total interest. And then option three is the most aggressive at 15 years. We can't really do a 20, 20 million at 18 or 15 years. So that's why that one only has the one option at 18 and a half million net proceeds. So it's a 15-year term at 3.07% interest. Of course, that is estimated. Interest rates will not be set until the bonds are sold right around May 1st. That is 1.5 or almost $1.6 million of annual debt service and $5 million of interest. So option two and three, we're getting up, we're giving up $2 million of flexibility. That's the main point that we want to share with you tonight. None of these options will require any additional tax increases to cover the annual debt service. So this is how we get to the 15-year term. We have to increase our annual debt service by about 85,000, and we can do that. That'll be on a slide later in the presentation. We have to take the money that we have set aside for the regional jail reserve and move it to our courthouse project. The 350,000 that we had set aside to increase our safety net to 17%, we have to take that and move that to the courthouse project. We have to take most of the interior renovation money that we showed you last week and move that to the, the courthouse project. And that's not to say it's not possible. Any interior renovation money of the building that's going to stay, it could come from any contingency that we will not use. It's just it's too early to tell you that we're not going to use that contingency. But there is $2.5 million of contingency. That is a very large amount. Once that project is above ground, we'll be able to reduce that amount and we'll know more, but that could be a few months out. And then we also have about a half a million dollars of carryover that we have not identified a use for. So this is the updated changes. If you want to do a 15-year term, the red box at the top, that's the jail reserve and using the safety net funds to add to our local funds for the project. The red box at the bottom, that is where you're going to see what's left over for the renovation of the building that is going to stay, which is right now, it's only 62,000, almost 63,000. But we do have the money to replace the roof and to demo the Big Lots building. So this would be interior renovation money. So there's a good chance that that contingency that you see about midway down, I would not think we need that much for this project, but it's too early to tell. We've been advised by Mosley to leave it in there for now. Yes. They said that we can reduce, not all of it, but a, a good portion of it once we get above ground, because there's a lot of unknowns when you start digging. I just want to remind you how we're paying for this without a tax increase. So if you see column J, we're going to run a deficit in our debt fund for the next four years, and it's going to spend down our debt sinking fund balance to about 700,000, which is about what we need to keep in there. And then, once we hit FY '29, that crossing debt is paid off, and we start building back up our reserve. So just want to remind you, this is our path to paying for the JDR debt service without a tax increase.
Okay, you just explain that one more time.
Okay, so column, so we're starting at the end of June, we'll have a debt sinking fund balance of almost $4.7 million. That's in column O. Column P just shows you what you have to keep in your debt sinking fund balance. And so for the next four years, our debt service payments are more than what we're contributing from the general fund. And so we run in a deficit that shows in column J, and we'll be spending down that fund balance. And about the time we run out of fund balance in 2028, that crossing debt falls out, falls off the debt schedule. Our debt payments are decreased by over $1 million, and we can start covering the JDR debt and building back up our fund balance.
Jesse, okay, you lost me one point. I mean, you, you made one statement, then I went, what?
Okay.
You, you said column P stated what you have to keep in there.
That's the minimum that we have to keep in there.
But then if we're running a debt of a million, two, and that.
We're, you see how column O is steadily decreasing?
Yeah.
That's the amount, it's decreasing by the amount of that deficit each year.
It's like using your savings account to pay your bills.
Yes.
And you're just depleting your savings account. And you're not, you're not putting anything back in. You don't have enough money in your checking account.
Okay.
So at one, some point, we're going to have, we're going to have enough money back in, because Stanton Crossing will fall off.
Right.
So then that will reestablish the debt, the fund balance.
I got that. I just, when she said, you have to keep it in there, I said, or you'll get penalized for not having it.
Well, column P, that's the minimum that you have to keep in there.
Yeah, just notice, column O never hits the number in column P.
Okay, it's close.
Right.
Okay, all right.
You can go back and look at column B. You see, for the next four years, you have the million nines or the million eights.
Right.
Yeah.
And in 2029, it all drops.
Yep, yep.
That's the, that's when Stanton Crossing gets paid off, and that's when you switch over. After that, then we're fine.
Yes.
2050 will be a heck of a year.
No, I'm sure there's going to be something.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I was sure, little, little cut.
Don't say that.
Yeah, it'll be 2049.
So, I mean, the end is in sight, it's, it's there. And, you know. It's a good plan.
And none of this is.
So, I mean, that's what I do personalize, if I can always make the higher payment and save me in the end, that's what I want to do.
Well, we're going to.
So, but Jesse, just to clarify, so between options two and option three, 20-year versus 15-year, you know, I was leaning towards the 15-year, but just so I understand, so in order to get to 15-year, we're giving up, we're using 2.03 million in flexibility
Yes.
to roughly save $700,000 in interest?
Yep.
No.
No.
2.7 million in interest.
Yeah, but we're giving up the flexibility, we're stealing funds.
Taking the net.
Once you remove the flexibility, aren't we only seeing a net of 700,000 in savings?
But.
I look at, I mean, look at it this way, you're, you are correct that you're losing flexibility. For what you gain long-term, you suffer short-term. So the flexibility, short-term is going away. Long-term, yeah, you're saving all this interest, which is great, long-term. It doesn't help you now, if you have, and Jesse is going to get to a slide in a minute that talks about priorities, and we know you all have other priorities. So it's not like buying a house where you want to probably get the shortest term as you can, and that will benefit you. This is different than that, whereas we know we have lots of other projects that we want to do. We heard about one in the next room a little while ago. So you're going to lose some short-term flexibility to gain in the long-term. And so there's a balance there. So that's, that's where we're kind of hoping, you know, we're kind of trying to guide this discussion a little bit.
And it is feasible to do. With the option one that you see up there, there's a good chance that we would come out of this project with a $2 million excess. Between the contingency, at being at 2 and a half million, you would think that maybe you only have to use half a million, if you're lucky. And then we had $1 million for the interior renovations. I have no idea what they're going to cost, but I wouldn't think they're a million. So I was thinking, we would come out of this project with 2 million excess, and we would use it to start a public safety facilities fund or on a different project. So going to 15 and dropping down to 18 and a half, it's very feasible. We're just not going to have much left over or any.
For the next five years.
And, yeah, there might have to be some other decisions have to be made once this project gets going and we really see where we are financially and where the project is. It, it just limits the decision-making. I, I don't know how else to say it, so.
And the other thing to look at, I mean, in the state of the city speech, we said things are going well, and we're basing a lot of what you're seeing in the 2025 budget based on 2023 numbers, because that's the last year that we could actually see the final figures. You know, after that, it's just pretty much, you keep bringing the same figure over to the next column. And we're on a growth pattern right now. So it's not as, it's, chances are, we're going to have some, some carryover, which, you know, I enjoy ribbing Jesse about every, every chance we get.
Fund the CIP first, and then we'd have to see what's left over.
Exactly. But this isn't cut and dry, it's going to be as tight as this. It could be better than this if we have any carryover, that's.
I think we don't know what we don't know, and that's the difficulty. I don't know how else to say it. This is where I have a, I mean, you know, and this is as your city manager and as your CFO, you know, we're trying to give the best direction.
Agreed.
But it is not easy, you know? It's, it's like, we just don't know what we don't know, frankly. And so part of me wants to be as conservative as possible, and the other part is like, oh, let's just do it and see what happens and check for the best.
My question is, is the option two typically like a middle ground that you can still save money and still not cut down on your flexibility? But from what I'm looking at, it's not that big a deal.
It's not.
Option two, you're still doing all these things and removing your $2 million of flexibility.
You're still moving, yeah.
It's just when I was.
That's hardly a compromise.
Right. No, but when you're showing how much interest you're going to spend at the 15 versus the 20, I felt like I need to put that same principal amount in there so that you're comparing apples to apples and not a $20 million principal and an $18 million principal. But you're still.
Okay, I'm, I was, I just saw the next slide, I said path to 15 years, and I thought that was the only one losing the two-year, 2 million.
No, option two, that's.
Yeah.
And so this slide just summarizes basically what we already talked about. This is what you're giving up to achieve 15 years. And those are the three things that we talked about that come to a little bit over $2 million. Not increasing the safety net right now, the jail reserve, what's remaining of it, of 719, and then taking $961,000 of the interior, what was the leftover local fund money that we stuck in the interior renovation line?
So the jail money, we know we're going to have to pay in next year. What was that one?
The, um, the jail buy-in?
600, something thousand.
630,000.
That's operating money, huh?
Yeah, it is operating.
Okay.
This is, this is not.
You could use that to bridge one year, but that's all it's going to get you.
That's right.
Yeah.
So this is not going to adversely affect what we're working on right now, the 24-25 budget? Everything still remains with that as is? Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Now, we have to add a little bit to debt service, which you'll see in a minute.
And she's got that on a slide coming up.
Okay.
So then we get to, okay, what are our priorities right now? Is the most important thing that we achieve a 15-year term on our debt? Is it that we make sure we have the renovation money for the, the building that will be adjacent to the courthouse, or do we plan that like at a future date? The other things that we have thought about are animal shelter, the Moxie Stadium improvements, the Gypsy Hill Park bathrooms, the poolhouse, public safety facilities. Do we want to have cash on hand from when we start looking at those? And then the Union Town, West End, the library needs and other city facilities. So.
Are you saying these all drop off?
No, I'm just saying.
Can't. We can get anything we want, but we can't get everything.
I'm just, I'm proving.
I think we're, I think this list is our attempt to say, we have heard what you've said, that you think all these projects are important.
Well, they are.
And they are, absolutely. So depending on the direction here is going to determine what the flexibility, so the flexibility you have in the short term versus the long term. So how much longer do you want to wait on some of these versus others?
Everything here can't be done in the next two years.
Absolutely not. Well, let's just take the animal shelter, for instance. We know, you all know, I've told you that the bids came in higher than we budgeted. We're still working through what that means. It will go up in cost, though. I don't know what that number is right now. We're working through that. So that's, that will be an immediate need.
Correct. And that's going to come out of the operating budget next.
No, that's going to come out somewhere in a capital budget. This is the capital for the new. Yeah, we have to figure that out. So that's an example of something that will have to be made soon, that decision, probably next month, actually.
It'd have to be on the last budget amendment.
Yeah, it'll be on her budget amendment in June.
We'll have to find it somewhere.
We'll have to figure that out. So that's an immediate need.
So when do you foresee them finding the number? Is the number set? Have they signed the contract?
Oh, no, no, they have not. We're, we met today, we're meeting again on the 23rd at our regular meeting. And hopefully by then, we'll have it resolved. So we'll know in a week and a half. Yeah.
So they had any further negotiations, who's going up the goal down?
Yes, all that's happening. Well, I'll just say that everything is happening right now in terms of where the, where we would like to try to get the cost. So all that is being worked on right now. So, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that up because that will be probably the next thing you see that you'll have to make a decision on. And that will definitely be an increase in, of some shape or form. I just don't know what the number is yet. Now, all these other things, yeah, I mean, a lot of those are going to be down the road.
Did Mr. Shockey make a bid on the animal shelter?
I can't remember who the contractor is for that.
Can we encourage him to make a bid?
No, that's all done.
He's busy, he's busy.
Yeah. He's to hire more.
Excuse me, they're very busy with our project. Thank you very much. No, they're, so. Is that your last slide?
It's not my last slide, but I feel like I need a little guidance for me.
Oh, okay. I mean, are we supposed to put the, like, one through 10?
I'm going to, I have to give my decision tomorrow morning.
For the, for the, I'm comfortable with 15 year.
Yeah, I mean, everything I've seen, I would say go with the 15. At least, that's my vote.
Yeah, there's nothing on there that's a nonstarter for me.
Yeah, I think, I just felt like it was my job to make you aware of flexibility you're giving up. I feel like we'll still have renovation money. I just have to leave it in contingency for now.
Thank you for your work.
Last Thursday night till 10, 10:30.
Even though it may have been in your easy chair.
I don't count that as work.
Well, it's work. When you're spending time thinking about this city after hours.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm going to proceed with the decision with BRA of 18.5 net bond proceeds over a 15 year term.
Go for it.
Yeah, okay. So we've had some changes that we recommend to the proposed budget. I'm going to go through those. We have, the indirect cost allocation report was done. So there'll be additional 121,465 of additional income to the general fund. And this comes from the water fund, sewer fund, environmental funds, all the enterprise funds paying for their share of the general fund services.
Is that because of the possible increase that we haven't voted on yet, or?
No, it, it just has to do with what, what kind of time certain departments, like attorneys, city manager, finance are putting into those different funds. We have to allocate our time. And it's all kinds of services that go into the indirect cost allocation, but yeah. It's just charging those enterprise funds for their share of general fund services. So the second number is additional comp board funds. I made up with a combination of those five different comp board departments that you see there. Majority of it came from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office that got bigger increases than we had budgeted for in the revenue side. So that's 121,313. And then additional state funds for the library of 30,318. And then the second set of bullet points is how we propose to spend those. The animal shelter budget went up by 2,027 from their initial proposed budget. And so the second item of 70,000 for the Villages Development Agreement, that was just an error. You know how when we talked about the proposed budget? And there was a section that had actually decreased. And it was related to the development agreement. That's because we were only picking up the commercial side of the development agreement. But there's also a real estate side that needed to be budgeted. So we're fixing that here. $85,000 in an increase in debt service that allows us to get to the 15 year term. We could live with 75,000, but we're building in a cushion in case interest rates bump up a little bit. And they, they kind of have, like lately, just a fraction of a percent, so. Structural payroll adjustments of 17,760, that is multiple departments in there. A new FTE for the Commissioner of the Revenue. She come back to us. And when she found out that her position was not in the proposed budget, and she met with Leslie and John and I, and laid out all the reasons why she needed that new position.
And again, this was a comp board position, so.
It is, it is partially funded by the state. It is one that they, I think they took it away in 2008, I believe, and they restored it in December.
Jesse, I'm sorry, I just have to ask. Tell me, what is structural payroll adjustments to all the different departments? I mean, somebody, little raises here, there, bonus?
Yes, it's.
No, no bonuses. There's no bonuses in here. These are like compression adjustments.
Compression adjustments, mostly fire.
Yeah.
And it was related to the pay and compensation study that was done. This is like a small phase two of that. But yeah, it's compression adjustments for mostly fire.
And then there's.
And a little, little bit in the library.
There's still pay increases of, what was it, 1%, what, 2%?
3% July 1st. That's still in there.
Yes.
So that's in addition to these.
Right, that's for all full and part-time employees. This is just for a pocket of employees that needed to have some adjustments made, mostly to deal with compression. And what Jesse was saying, mostly the fire department.
I understand that, I just.
The 9,684 is a reduction in the Detention Center budget from their initial FY25 proposed budget. And then we decided, since we have that additional 30,318 from the state for the library funds, that this was a good time to fund her request to take her part-time librarian to a full-time position. So that is just the net, because it's already in our budget at a part-time position. And so to go full-time is almost 50,000. And 30,318 will be covered from the state funds. And the other 19,316, she identified savings in her own budget to be able to get this position. She said this position requires a master degree. It's very hard to find somebody to fill a part-time position with a master's degree. And she, this position turns over about once a year. And so she's hoping by going to full-time, from part-time to full-time, that it will allow her to keep somebody. So we thought that this, maybe this was a good time to go ahead and do that. She requested another full-time, but that, that one remains on the unfunded list. And that is all I had for this work session.
What's that, what's that equal out to with all the pluses and the minuses?
Those right there, they equal zero.
So the total budget doesn't change? Does it?
Uh, it's going to increase by that amount of revenue.
Oh, that's, it'll go up by that, I'm sorry, yeah.
Good. Questions from council?
Almost $300,000.
Yes.
Is there anything from the last work session? We were trying to also think about anything from the CIP that you all wanted to bring up again this evening. We didn't really get any other questions, but is there something else we wanted to follow up on?
Well, you were.
Again, you'll have an opportunity to review the CIP when the carryover fun, you know, when we do the carryover later this year, because that's how it's going to be funded.
You mentioned that you, that staff was going to present a, a council thing for this, you know, the 50 or whatever.
Right, we can do that after the budget's adopted.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir. Yep. So we talked a lot, about a lot of different things last week. The Gypsy Hill Park Pool, which you all agreed to have, to use their additional ARPA funds to do the design for that. And then we come back to you for that. We talked about Moxie a little bit. So I don't, is there, is there something else to follow up on? This is the time, we have a little bit of time before your break, so.
I think we talked about Moxie last.
Yeah, we did, as far as the CIP, a little bit, yeah.
Just the widening of the scope of the fund.
Yes. As a general consensus, then we'll just need to talk about that because that will appear on your last budget amendment. That is when I'll present, well, Jen actually is going to present it for me.
Yeah, Jen Jallor is going to present.
It gets presented the first meeting in June and approved the second meeting in June. And that's when we are going to appropriate the rest of the carryover dollars to fund the rest of the CIP. The one that we delayed until we got our courthouse bids back. And that, I believe that first $600,000 for Moxie is in there. So if you, if there's a consensus that you want to call it Parks and Rec Facility Fund, I just need to know that soon. Because that is going to be on that budget amendment. And we'll also be.
I support that since we're, things are so unknown with what the scope of that's going to ultimately be.
And we'll also, there'll be probably a little over a million dollars of interest. That if you think that that's the appropriate place for it, is in that Parks and Rec Facility Fund. That will go in there along with the 600,000. So at that point in time, we'll have about 1.7 million dollars in that fund in June. And then we can continue these discussions, once we know more and decide what we want to do and when we want to do it.
Lot of needs in that category.
Alright.
I was, Jesse, I've asked before, for the various funds, if we're, we're just, we've just mentioned the possibility of creating two additional reserves. The Parks and Rec one and then a public safety one. Is it, is it better to have it laid out in that specificity? Or is it, I mean, we've, I've shared with you before, our other funds, we have a sidewalk fund, a brick sidewalk fund, a greenway fund. I mean, does it make sense to have them laid out that way, or is it?
You mean in like a general facilities fund? Well.
I know it gets lost in the shuffle of what, those funds are actually geared towards.
Certain departments are like, oh, I thought that was mine. And you're like, no, I thought it was mine.
Yeah, I think, I think if you designate it for like public safety or parks, then you're saying it's for public safety or parks. And there's no ambiguity to that. For a future council to change that, they would have to change that. Otherwise, you know, that, that's how it would be identified. So I, in my experience, like Jesse, I've seen it done that way. You know, that's typically how it's been done, so.
So do you think the million dollars in interest that we'll have, that that's the best place for it? Or do you want to put it in undesigned it for now, or do you have an opinion on that?
You can move it, right?
Yes, I'm sure.
Well, I mean, we.
Put it there.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't know what we want to do with it yet.
Yeah.
Well, the need is there. We've talked about it so many times.
Right, that's what I'm saying, leave it there, put it there. And then if you find yourself in a situation where you have to move it to undesigned it, then you could.
So did.
I feel like we won't make a decision on how we're going to spend it until we're into FY25. And then by that time, we'll have the, the second 600,000 in there. And so we'll be up to about 2.3. And then we can decide at that point in time, okay, what's our priority?
You're talking parks, right? I mean, yeah, because we've got plenty of needs in the parks.
Yes, we do.
Okay. That's all I have, I'm leaving.
That's all we had, unless there was something else. I just wanted to open it up for any other issues that you all might have about anything.
I do want to let you know, going with the 15 year term, the one debt ratio that we're not meeting currently, 15 year term is going to put us right at 49. So it's going to be right there, almost half.
You say, can you explain that?
So there is a debt ratio, and I feel like it's a very hard one to me, that you have to pay back. And I believe it looks at general fund only, 50% of your debt principal in the next 10 years.
Right.
So even with a 20-year loan, you can't do that because most of the principal is paid on the backside, not the front. It's not even. But this 15-year term will allow us to reach 49%.
Oh.
That's very clear.
We're in compliance, finally.
That's another bonus I hadn't thought about.
Yeah. So.
We'll be in compliance with all our debt policies now.
We'll be right there.
No, it's still in compliance, though. Trying to be optimistic here.
It's hard.
We've been out of compliance for a while.
It's hard to call an $18 million debt a bonus.
Yeah.
No doubt.
If we keep it to 15 years, it, you know, it's.
I'm just thankful for the fund balance that is there and the timing of the crossing debt, that we don't have to do a real estate tax increase in order to.
No.
Fund the annual debt service. That's a lot of pennies on.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Anything else from members of council? That was, that was nice.
So we do not meet next week. We've canceled the work session on the 18th. We will meet again, obviously, on the 25th. And if we need to have a quick work session during the work session, we can do that. That's fine. We'll just kind of see where we are and see what other questions come up from you all in the next week or so.
Might need some topics to talk about.
We don't have to schedule a work session. So that night will be the consideration of the budget and all the ordinances.
That'll be a public hearing.
And tonight is the public, are the public hearings, yeah, correct, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. So I now call the work session adjourned. Good evening, everyone. We call the regular, regular session of our April 11th meeting to order. If there are, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's funny. Alright, and tonight's invocation moment of silence will be brought to us by Councilor Arrowhead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're in, definitely in spring now, and I think it is home repair season as well. My background with Habitat and other organizations similar to that, just ask everyone to keep in mind their neighbors with disabilities or the elderly. Please try to give them a hand, you know, if things need to be done around the house, outside of the house. And also, I've, I've felt very fortunate to be able to volunteer recently with Renewing Homes, which is a great organization. If you have a chance, they could use some help. Habitat could use some help. A lot of organizations helping out people that can't do these things for themselves. So I would, I would urge everyone who can to try to spend a little bit of time doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that comes to the mayor's report. This morning, I had the privilege of attending the Tourism Advisory Board on the council liaison. And we had a great meeting this morning. And the one thing I wanted to share with everyone is they presented some magazines. One from Cary, North Carolina, and this one's from Wake, which is down there in the same area. And there's a 16-page spread in here about Stanton with some great photos. I mean, unbelievable photos. This is just cameras from the Cameron palette.
Dave Schwartz, yep.
It's unbelievable and just, they're calling it a gem, you know, to experience Stanton. So it's, it's really positive to see our tourism people working as hard as they are. And so I'll tell you some of the other things they said. This coming Sunday, this coming Saturday at noon at Trinity Church, there will be a free concert from the Stanton Music Festival. All Baroque music, but they're, they're offering that free of charge to everybody in the city. We had a very interesting. We had a very interesting presentation from Brad, your, your buddy from Habitat from Humanity. Lance came and he has a Polish posters.
I've heard about that, yeah.
Very, very, very interesting. And he had some examples in the room this morning. And there's going to be a series of Polish posters displayed through downtown Stanton. And there's five different themes. So for one of them, it's going to be all Shakespeare and that's going to be in conjunction with the Shakespeare Festival. There's another one for the film series that it has all film things. Oh, and one of the interesting things about the film was it is illegal in Poland to put a poster on your movie house that is made in America. It must be made in Poland in order to put it. So some of the movies we recognize, he had them with the Polish variation. He was quite interested to see. But that's the type of thing that there's going to be in, they're just asking various business organizations up and down Beverly Street to display them in their windows. And so it's, it's going to be, once again, something that for us to walk up and down Main Street and gawk at. We'll, we'll end up looking like the rest of the tourists going, wow, look at that. And, and there's also a, a series coming for the Queen City. Mr. Vin Magic, they had some posters. They have a artist over there who is working to develop some strictly for our event in September. So it's going to be very interesting. Also want everybody to know that Mary Baldwin graduation is May the 18th and 19th. So expect some crowds in downtown Stanton. And Hyphens is getting ready to get going again. They have 164 people coming to spend the summer here. The June 14th, all the adult will be arriving and half of the kids. And then the second group of children arrive on July 7th. So very busy morning. There's a lot of things happening. Those people are doing a really outstanding job of promoting downtown Stanton. And I, I urge everybody to get out and check it out. And that's all I have for the mayor's report. Additional items by members of council? Who's up?
Well, it's been a busy time. I just wanted to recognize that the African-American Heritage Festival Foundation is sponsoring the Fist Jubilee Singers from Fist University on Saturday. They will be at Central United Methodist Church. And even though that's not a free event, they still have tickets for two showings and that's at 3:30 and 7:00. So you can contact anyone or, you know, go on the Facebook page and find out, so.
Good.
Go ahead.
The only thing I have to add on, Alice, is I picked some of these up. This is what Councilwoman Woods is talking about. So someone asked me to hand these out. I'm going to go ahead and just hand these to the clerk of council. So if you want to find out the information for the concert that Councilwoman Woods was talking about, please come pick one up.
I didn't know you had those.
I did with my notes.
I do have one thing. This, this weekend, 13th and 14th is the Remote Area Medical Free Clinic in Fishersville.
Yep.
At the Expo Center there too. And it's, it'll be medical, dental and vision care. So if anyone is in need and cannot afford medical care, that's, that's going on this weekend at the Expo Center.
And to tag on to that, I heard that the Salvation Army, if you cannot get a ride to the Ram Clinic, get in touch with the Salvation Army and they are providing transportation to Expo. Oh, good.
And then I may add also that Bright is providing transit on that day as well. Bright, the Bright system, if you go and find them online, you can get that information, go on the website of the Ram site. So they're providing information that day as well, transportation, sorry.
And I believe, because I remember every, it's open to everybody. Everybody can get medical care. But if you want vision or dental, you have to tell them what, which one you can go to. They give you a ticket for that because they don't have enough to, you know, everybody comes like, it's going to be seen. And, and I think the doors open up at, at 12, no, tickets at 6. But you can actually get on the parking lot at Expo at midnight.
Yes.
But, you know, you can get seen medically or you can, or, and be seen either through vision or dental if you need that. So it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing that, that the UVA, the students are doing, so. Excited about that.
Yeah, one thing that blew me away, those young women who talked to us, I think it was the last time it all blends together. They were saying you could get a full eye exam and they were making glasses on site.
On site.
You could leave with glasses, yeah.
And if you need to get extractions, they do that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Teeth pulled, cavities, they fill, yep.
Absolutely. Another thing that I would like to mention that Senator Tim Kaine came through to House City on last Tuesday. He is up for campaigning for reelection to the US Senate. So I was asked to come and just give a few words at that, not knowing that that's what actually is, well.
You were the star of the show.
It wasn't supposed to be about me. Thanks to Laura, I know that I'm on front and center page of the news leader, but thank you for your article. That was really a great article and I just got to meet Senator Tim Kaine. So sometimes you have to be some places to see some things and this was the opportunity and I took it, so, yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
All righty, we've been busy. All right, that brings us to our regular meeting. Item A, the consent agenda. Per council procedure memorandum number 14 is the policy of city council to have routine non-controversial items placed in a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If separate discussion of any item is requested by any member of council, that item shall be removed and considered separately at the end of the regular meeting. Do any council members desire to remove any item from the consent agenda to be placed at the regular meeting agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve.
I was just going to say, Ms. Mayor, on the vice of council and thinking about it, out of abundance of caution, I will abstain from this particular vote.
So with that being said.
Consent agenda?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
It has the.
There's a form.
Pharmaceutical, yes.
Got you, got you. All right, I will accept the motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor Claffey? I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Woods. Mr. Kestner, please color over.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Robertson?
Abstain.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to item B, which is a public hearing of ordinances for water user fees, sewer user fees and stormwater fee and crediting system changes included in the fiscal year 2025 budget. Ms. Bogart?
Ms. Jesse Moyers, our CFO, has a brief presentation to provide before the public hearing and will answer any questions before you open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Welcome.
Welcome. Welcome back.
So tonight we're going to have a public hearing right after my presentation on utility fee increases. We're proposing an increase for water, sewer and stormwater. And I just want to run you through the, the slides on those. I want to start by talking to you about what a proprietary fund is, also sometimes referred to as an enterprise fund. These funds are meant to be self-supporting. That means that the revenue comes from user fees and not from tax revenue. So they are meant, the user fees are meant to cover the operating expenses, the capital expenditures and the debt service for that particular fund. They work very similar to entities in the private sector. So Stanton's proprietary funds are the water fund, sewer, environmental, parking and then the stormwater fund. So this slide should be familiar to you. I presented it, I think, maybe in February. This is our current water user fee. Our current fee is $3.86 per HCF. An HCF is about 748 gallons of water. The last time we changed this rate was four years ago. And as you know, inflation has grown since then. We are significantly lower than localities around us. That's what you'll see in the chart down there. That's an average cost for 14 HCF on the, the right side of the graph. So even with the increase, we will still be significantly cheaper than water systems around us. So some of the reasons why we need an increase, as you know, we've had to add five positions to our water treatment plant. One of those was in FY '23. We added two during last year's budget process and we had to add two more this year during the budget process. That will be the end of those positions that are required to continue to operate as a class one facility. The water treatment plant wages have went from about 472,000 in 2020 to 1.1 million dollars in the FY '25 budget. And there's been no increase over those four years. We have three positions on hold. Turnover remains a problem and this is mostly in the water line, the distribution side of the water system. And inflation is about 20% for materials and supplies. We have fully eliminated budgeting any depreciation with the FY '24 budget. And so as of right now, we're not budgeting any depreciation. Just wanted to give you a reminder of our current year and five-year CIP plan. Starting FY '25 through '29, there's about $19 million worth of CIP infrastructure projects that we need to do. And I want to make sure that you know that the Union Town extension construction is not on here and the North River Pipeline extension, the construction piece of it is not on here. Those are two very important projects that we want to be able to plan for in our future. So my proposal in the water fund is a 5% increase, which is equivalent to 20 cents on the 100 cubic feet. That will bring in about 155,000 of additional revenue. The impact on a monthly, the minimum bill is about a dollar every two months. And on the average household consumption, it's about $2.80 every two months. Rate increases are necessary to plan for those capital, those infrastructure needs that are in our future. But on to sewer. Sewer has not increased in 12 years. That is a long time to go without an increase. It's at $4.88 per HCF. And you see, when we're compared to the localities around us, those are kind of some that are in our, our size range. We are low on sewer by far. Once again, they told, the right-hand column is about an average family's usage of 14 HCF. And you can see we're significantly low on our sewer charge and we will remain low even with the proposed increase. So these are some of the expenditures we've had to cover since we've last had an increase. We had to put one position on hold in the sewer lines department. We had to eliminate, fully eliminate budgeting any depreciation, which is budgeting depreciation allows you to plan for future capital needs to allow you to grow your fund balance. And then the Middle River Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is who processes our sewer. Their FY '13 budget was 954,000. The most recent budget or the one that we'll be adopting for next year is 2.2 million dollars. So a very significant increase. So we're proposing a larger fee increase here because this fund currently is insolvent without this increase, meaning that current operating revenues do not cover the current operating expenditures, expenditures in their annual debt service. That is not a place you want to be in with your enterprise fund. It needs to be supporting itself. So this fee increase is 15% increase at 72 cents per HCF. Like I said, it's been 12 years since we increased this one. The monthly bill effect is $3.60 every two months. Or averaging it out for a family of four's consumption is $10.08 per billing cycle, which is two months. Yes.
When did the fund become insolvent?
I would say this year.
Okay.
Yes, this is the year that finally it couldn't afford the, and we would have to use the fund balance. We've been using some fund balance for capital projects. But insolvency doesn't even look at capital. It's more your operations and your debt. And so I wanted to give you the outlook for this year and the next five years for the CIP, for the sewer expenditures. Not as high as what we're seeing for water, but it is significant. Once again, the design of Union Town is in here, but the construction is not on the five-year CIP. So we want to make sure that when we get to that point, that we're able to fund that. So a question had come up, what does it take to fully fund the, the sewer fund and the CIP and the sewer fund? And it's an 18% increase for the next five fiscal years each year. We know that's not feasible. So our recommendation is that we start with a 15% increase in FY 2025. We use the fund balance that we have for the CIP for the next few fiscal years. And then we revisit this rate in FY '26 or FY '27. And this one requires the, a larger increase just because it needs to cover its operating expenses as well as provide for future capital needs. Is there any questions on water or sewer before I move forward?
And that's, this is the one that has not been increased in 12 years?
Yes. I think it was July 1st, 2012. Stormwater has not been increased in 14 years. And large commercial properties can receive as much as a 90% reduction under the current crediting system, which is a six-tier system. And so what happens with the six-tier crediting system is it shifts the burden to the residential customers. And so we want to fix that crediting system and we're going to, or proposing that we take it to a two-tier reduction, one tier for quality credit and one tier for quantity credit. And that would reduce our overall credits to our revenue from 25% to about 5%. So if you remember from the Wiley Wilson presentation in December, to fully fund the stormwater fund with no change in credits, it was $10.56. And to fix the crediting system and to fully fund it was $8.04. And that's the monthly charge, the minimum monthly charge. So staff's recommendation is that we increase it to $5, which is below Wiley Wilson's recommendation. But we know we have to look at everything and not just the stormwater fund. So this will provide an extra $576,000 annually. So it does not fully fund the CIP, but we're hoping by the time we get to FY '27 and '28 CIP projects, that there'll be grants that we can get to help fill the gaps. If not, we might have to look to a debt issuance in our future for the stormwater fund. And this rate will not be reevaluated for the next five years. It's on a five-year cycle. So this is just a chart that you would have seen during Wiley Wilson's presentation to show their recommendation, scenario two and scenario four. And we're right below those at the $5 mark. The first gold bar, I believe that is the city of Waynesboro. And the second one is the city of Harrisonburg. So we're going to be right between those two at this point in time. And like I said, once this fee is set, we won't revisit it for five years. And so that was the end of my presentation on the proposed increases. I can take questions now.
Questions from council?
If we can't touch this for five years, do you feel we'll be that much more behind in five years?
You can touch it. It's just the, the plan that Wiley put forth is a five-year plan. And so we don't plan to come back in those five years, but you can.
We would have to specifically chase it.
Yes.
Okay.
So if something serious was to occur, you'd have the ability?
Yeah, okay. So it's not locked in any way. Okay.
Right, no.
Right.
Ms. Moyes, I, Ms. Moyers, thank you so much for putting this together and explaining it so well, but, so.
But so looking at all of our capital expenditures and needs, you know, looking at the other water projects, and we have the design of the Union Town Water Extension, the design costs at $375,000.
That is an estimate.
That's an estimate.
Yes.
And then we assume that it's, there will be a large cost involved in that. Is that something that might, that would, we might be able to get grants? Do you have any idea how that might be able to be funded on top of all these other water projects?
We're hoping for a grant, but if not, we may have to look at a debt issuance around FY '28 or '29 and combine the Richmond Avenue Phase 2 construction with Union Town. And by that time, hopefully, our rate will be sustainable enough that we can afford the debt service on those. So it's not like increasing the rate is going to provide you with all the cash you need, but it would help you cover the debt service when that time comes to do those projects.
Jesse?
Yes.
And can you just real quick, I didn't have it, how much are we asking between water, sewer, storm? What's going to be like, I mean, what?
For the average family, are you saying?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Will you add the three numbers together?
Oh, I know, I'm just.
Isn't it right here?
It's $280. So $1288 plus, it's about $15. I think when I added it up, for an average family, it's about $99 for the entire year.
The entire year, okay.
Twelve-something every two months when you get your water. Necessary evil, I'm afraid.
I know it, I hate it.
I hate to be the bearer of bad news, I'm sorry.
Well, I understand, but when you go 12 and 14 years without adjusting anything, and we all know what inflation's doing, and additional positions are probably the.
And it's not fluff, I mean, it's got to be in order to meet the costs. I mean, it's like, we have the highest quality water system possible, which is great. Absolutely, and we're blessed with two sources of it, so.
Any further questions from council before I open this up for a public hearing? Virginia Code Section 15.2-107 and 15.2-2109 require that a public hearing is held to receive comments on the proposed rate changes. We ask that if you wish to speak on this topic, you come to the podium, give your name, address, and keep your remarks of five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during council meeting during, for any other public hearings as well as matters from the public. Once again, everyone, once everyone has had a chance to speak, I will close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak strictly on the rate increases proposed for water, sewer, and stormwater fees? Mr. Kestner, do you have anyone on Zoom line?
Yes, sir.
Caller, go ahead, please.
This is Brenda Mead, 342 Sherwood Avenue. I'm fully in support of these fee increases. In fact, I really think that we need to establish a policy of creating fee increases that are, that help us keep pace with inflation. My basement has been inundated twice in the last 10 years with raw sewage. And it's because the, I live in an old part of Stanton, and the sewer lines were built many years ago. They've been, they are, they are breaking, they are, you know, trees are, tree roots are, are breaking the sewer lines. The sewer runs underneath my home, you know, due to the fact that, you know, 100 years ago when my home was built, we didn't have regulations about that sort of thing. So twice in the last 10 years, my home has been inundated with raw sewage. And once, just more recently, the manhole cover in the alley next to my home erupted in raw sewage, and it ran down the street. So clearly, these things need attention, and I very much support these increases. And in fact, I would encourage council to consider increasing those fees further. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the water, sewer, and stormwater fees increase? Mr. Kestner, anyone else?
No, sir, I have no one with their hands raised.
All right, in which case, the public hearing is now concluded. Do we have a motion?
A motion, a motion.
Yeah, very good. All right, and that brings us to the next item, which is a public hearing of an ordinance to establish a budget for 2025. Welcome back.
Thank you, I'm going to give Kylie a second just to get the next one up.
Is it this one?
Yes. So the next public hearing is on our FY '25 budget. The total city budget is $148,269,45. This is about a 5.5 million or 3.6% decrease over '24. The reason for that decrease is that in FY '24, there were significant grants included in the water and sewer budget, and those were the crossing grants with the state money. So the general fund portion of this is $73,230,288. That is a $3.4 million increase, the equivalent of 4.9% over FY '24. There are no tax increases proposed with this budget. Real estate tax rate remains at 89 cents per 100 of assessed value. The public hearing was advertised April 3rd as required. So you saw this slide last week, but I wanted to bring it back before you this week just to remind you, these are our top revenue changes and our top expense changes in the general fund budget. Since we have no new tax revenue, these are the, this is where we're getting our new revenue for the FY '25 budget. Increasing meals and sales tax closer to actuals. The interest income at $505,000, it's still maybe a little over half of what we're earning. So we're leaving room for the interest rates to dip down, so we don't want to be too aggressive here. And then an increase in personal property and then real estate is related to new construction. So the biggest increase in our general fund budget, of course, is our school system at almost $1.3 million, and that is based on the funding formula that has been in place the last two years. There are five proposed sheriff deputy positions in the FY '25 budget with two positions starting July 1st and the other three starting January 1st. There are additional positions that will be considered, but that will not be until the FY '26 budget process. And all these positions relate to the construction of the Stanton's own juvenile and domestic relations court. There's a 3% COLA effective July 1st in the proposed budget. The general fund value of that is about $682,500. There are increases in outside agency funding of $108,819. The regional jail, our share of that increased by $131,851. And then a new position for deputy engineer, because we have a lot of projects going on with local money, ARPA money, and VDOT money. So those are our top expenditures in the general fund budget. So budget balancing is all about choices. We could not fulfill all the requests from our staff, personnel, or operating expenses. The plan to fund the '25 CIP, again, is using carryover funds from FY '24. We hope to one day get that back into our operating budget, but it has been hard post-COVID to do that. The new department requests that remain unfunded is roughly $1.6 million. And operation and equipment quest unfunded is $1.4 million. Just wanted to let you know, we do have budget attrition once again. That was something that we put in FY '24's budget, and we have it again in there in FY '25 at the same amount of $300,000. And we talked about this earlier, but this budget does use $1.2 million from the debt service thinking fund to account for the debt service payments on the JDR court that we're building. So the next couple of slides are just a copy of the ordinance for this year's budget. This is the general fund section, the revenues and the expenditures, $73,230,288. And then we have the debt service thinking fund, the capital projects. So the three projects that we do have in the capital fund are the three that were set up during the FY '24 budget process, and we're carrying those over. That is the West End revitalization, the Union Town Neighborhood Plan, and the library money that was set aside. And those are the equivalent of one penny each on the 2023 tax real estate rate. And so we're doing that again and leaving that in there for the second year of funding for those three. We have Blue Ridge Court Services for almost $1.5 million. The Water Fund at $4.9, Sewer at about $5.7, the Parking Fund at $460,000, Stormwater at almost $1.4 million, Environmental Fund at $5.1. And then we have our Education Fund at almost $43 million. You will see the footnote there that the Commonwealth of Virginia number is still an estimate. We're still waiting on final numbers from the state for that. Cafeteria, $2.2 million, Textbook Fund, $403,552, the School Capital Improvements Fund, $150,000. And then we have our SOPs, which is the CCCA and the Detention Center, the education piece of those, at $2.7 million, and that's all state funding, for a total of $148,269,045. And that concludes my presentation. I can take any questions that you have.
A balanced budget, $148 million. Questions from councilor? It's a quiet bunch tonight.
Yeah, we've gone over it many times.
$148 million.
I'll just say this too, because our third or fourth.
The budget work session when we talked about the possible amendments, those will be reflected in the final ordinance that will be considered in two weeks. So that was presented during the work session.
This is what we've already seen.
This is just the original ordinance.
Correct.
Yes.
Not a lot of changes from, I guess, what we saw before, so.
No, the only changes between the proposed and the final will be what you saw earlier in the work session.
That's what, just saying, thank you. Yeah, no.
All right, unless anyone has any more questions with Jesse, we're going to open a public hearing. This public hearing is specifically for the topic of the proposed budget. And I ask that you come to the podium, give your name, address, keep your remarks of five minutes or less. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now. Public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to speak on the matters pertaining here? Boy, not only do we have a quiet diaspora, we have a quiet crowd out here tonight. Anybody like to speak? Mr. Kestner, we have anybody online?
No, sir, I have no one with their hands raised.
We seem to feel nothing, huh?
He's here.
All right, the public hearing is over.
All the funds in the county.
Must be. All right. Thank you for two public hearings that were very quiet. All right, that brings us to matters from the city manager.
Great, I have a few things to talk about tonight. So you may have noticed, there's some changes in the bottom floor here of City Hall. So utility billing is now next to the treasurer's office, and the voting registrar's office will move to where utility billing was. Those are beneficial in a few ways. One, we're trying to get the voting registrar away from their small, tiny closet that they have at the end of the hall, and the voting machines are right up against where people are paying bills. So it wasn't very, it was pretty, yeah, there wasn't much privacy there. So they'll have more office space on this end, a counter for folks to come up to, and more room to place those, the kiosk for the voting. So that's exciting. Eventually, they will move to a new location, very likely in Chestnut Hills when, after the JDR Court project is completed. So this is a temporary solution, but a good one. Utility billing is now in one, so everything's a one-stop shop at the other end of the City Hall, of City Hall now. So you can pay your personal property tax, real estate, and utility bills practically at the same window. So that's great. So Shane and Shelley have moved down there next with the treasurer. So we're pleased with these changes, and so you'll see, everything will transition tomorrow. And so as of Monday, everybody will be officially switched, so that's exciting. So we're very happy to have, and Kristi Lindhous, who's our registrar, is very happy about this, very grateful. So that's exciting news on the first floor. My second item is about the comprehensive plan. So staff's briefed council and the public a couple of times about this. And starting tomorrow, an application will be available for anyone interested in serving on the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. So this committee will guide the development of the comprehensive plan, update on a section-by-section basis, and solicit input from citizens and from the community. It will be 11 members, and will consist of the Planning Commission, City Council's liaison to the commission, and five additional citizen members appointed by the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission will review, interview, and select the committee members. So I know something will go out on social media about this and in our news tomorrow, so be on the lookout for that if you're interested. As far as projects, you've seen the posters in the hallway and in Gypsy Hill Park. Stream restoration will begin in earnest next week on Monday, the 15th. You'll see the contractor mobilizing their equipment in the park. So that will be very exciting to see that project start. And I'd like to expand on what Mayor Claffey said earlier about the great spreads we had in these magazines. Stanton has ranked, been ranked number six in USA Today's Best Small Town Cultural Scene for 2024, and we were the only Virginia city in that ranking.
You're here.
All right, way to go.
That's the conclusion of my remarks tonight.
Thank you, thank you. All right, that brings us to matters from the public. This part of City Council's agenda is called Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stan City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk. You are asked to familiarize yourself with these rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. Do we have anyone that would like to speak on our Matters from the Public tonight? Mr. Kestner, you say a caller?
Yes, sir.
Caller, go ahead, please.
This is Brenda Mead again. I'd just like to know when Stanton University is going to be, going to come back again. Hello, can you hear me?
We'll get back to you on that, I'm not sure.
Who's going to get back to me on that?
Ms. Mead, I will, this is Leslie Ballard.
Thank you, Leslie, I appreciate you.
Anyone else like to speak? In which case I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you and good evening.